I'd like to call the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting to order at seven oh one P. M. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Certainly would like to offer our condolences to the family of Enrique Martinez, who was the Chicago police officer who was slain in the line of duty on November fourth. In his honor, we are flying our flags at half staff. He was laid to rest yesterday. He was a twenty-six-year-old police officer from the city of Chicago. So we offer our condolences to his family, to all of the other police officers who worked with him, and to all the police officers throughout the state of Illinois. And I would ask for a moment of silence in honor of Enrique Martinez. Thank you. Roll call, please, Chris.
Reese Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Jennifer Methvin.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal. Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Zepidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Okay, there was seen a text from Alderwoman Gazal late this afternoon. She is unable to be here this evening, so she is excused. You have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on November fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for the approval of the city council meetings of November fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments?
Just one comment, Mayor. It appears in the, in the body, it says that Alderwoman Methvin wasn't here, but I believe she was.
I was for that one, actually.
Motion second with the correction.
Present.
On page one.
With correction, yes.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our agenda items, to our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have several agenda items before you tonight. The first is an ordinance that creates the position of assistant to the director of public works and amends section two point five oh point zero seven zero to include the newly created position within the supervision of the director of public works. This was before you, twice before it was tabled and brought back to a works, tabled for tonight, but it was also discussed at last week's work session. The prior ordinance as drafted, in addition to doing what this ordinance does, it also eliminated and repealed the position of assistant public works, assistant public works director per the direction from the council last week. I have removed that repeal of the assistant public works director position. So this ordinance before you tonight makes those corrections and does nothing other than create the new position of assistant to the director of public works. And then it also amends section two point five zero point zero seven zero to make it clear that the newly created position will report to and be under the supervision of the director of public works. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions, but a motion would be in order.
So move as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for an ordinance creating the position of assistant to the director of public works and amending section two point five zero point zero seven zero to include the newly created position within the supervision of the director of public works. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please, Chris.
Darrell Jefferson.
No.
Tina Oberlin.
No.
Mark Zepidi.
No.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
No.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Motion carries its four to three. Ordinance number two oh oh four.
No, it failed.
I don't think that's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion failed. I'm thinking. I'm backwards, but it's, oh, ordinance two oh oh four.
What was the ordinance number?
Two oh oh four.
The next agenda item was a resolution that approves the promotion of Ada Martino to the newly created position of assistant director of assistant to the director of public works and setting the initial salary for that position. By the failure of the prior ordinance, this resolution is apparently moot since there is no position for which the promotion can be made. Since it's on the agenda, I suppose we should go through the formality of seeing if there's a motion to approve with a second, although I suspect that it will fail.
Questions or comments of the attorney?
A motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Albert. I have a question. Who made the second? Alderwoman Kubal? Go ahead.
But as you said, is the first ordinance that did not pass. There's no position created, but this vote is for a promotion into a position that is not there.
Again, and I presume that it will fail. But if there's a motion and a second to approve, I guess you have to go through the formality of voting.
Okay.
Roll call, Chris.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
No.
Tina Oberlin.
No.
Mark Zepidi.
No.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
No.
Motion failed. It's resolution one two six seven.
The next item would be a resolution that eliminates the position of public works administrative assistant previously held by Ada Martino. Again, I believe that this is probably a moot point and it would, since the prior motion or the prior resolution failed, I don't know what purpose it would serve to make a motion. But again, if there is going to be a motion and a second, then you would have to go through with the vote. But again, I don't see the purpose of such a motion. But that's up to someone to make a motion if that's what they want to do.
Motion would be in order? Motion would be in order?
Absent a motion or a second, then this would fail as well.
So this would fail also?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a roll call on that?
There's nothing to call and roll on. There is no motion or second, so it fails of its own accord. And that are, that is it for me as far as agenda items. Other than that, I would entertain any questions.
Any questions of our city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our public works department, I will handle these two agenda items, or forgive me. City Administrator, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, the report starts off with, we're starting to track the city center facility. So giving you the outstanding projects and where they're at. The plumbing in the police department, we're going to gather some proposals in regards to sanitary sort of. We keep having some clogging going on there. It's going to have to be redesigned. Some new pipes going to have to get put in there so it would stop the, basically the back flush. The bulletproof windows, we're going to put out as a request for bids. So we're going to prepare that and do the advertising. Since calling up the companies, we're not getting back any quotes except the one company that put it in, and that was around seven thousand to replace the window. Storm, stormwater drainage pipes. Public Works was able to televise our storm drain pipes. We do know that a few of them are cracked and busted. So Mike Ulis, before he took his hiatus right now, suggested that we prepare a proposal to fix those pipes. That's why we're getting the backlog on the drainage up on the roof. Can't drain fast enough when we get a hard rain. And then it come, as you can tell, it'll come over the windows and side of the side of the building. So we're going to have to get a proposal together to fix the stormwater drainage pipes. We might be able to do it ourselves, but I'll be talking to the public works to see if that's possible. The, we had damage around the window frames. It's not the frame itself, it's, it's on the corners where the mortar is cracking. It's, it's not from suddenly. We had the mason and concrete people here. It's basically a design flaw. They should have put in some separations in certain sections so it would absorb the tension. So we're getting that analyzed to see what type of fix we could do so it doesn't damage any further our, our structures and the windows. Right now, the windows are not damaged at all. We're, we're pretty well assured by the mason that the windows are probably steady, sturdy. The HVAC, we started the maintenance on it, and they're coming back with a follow-up to perform some of the duties that they need to do. Some of it is the vents that are for the bathrooms. They need to be insulated because we're getting moisture from the vents, and that's what's dripping on some of the ceilings. So working with Tony Alaska and with Don Seaman, and we're trying to get that fixed. Police parking lot security gate, we need to have a maintenance done on it. It's starting to stick and coming off the rails a little bit. It is suggested that, just like your own garage, you probably should have somebody come out and do an inspection and, you know, look at the gates because of the, the way it's starting to bend a little bit. It could have further damage. We contacted the company that did the install and see what they suggest. Grand Prairie Water Commission, the budget is draft form. They are coming to meet us on the twenty-first to go over the budget with us. Ron's been attending the meetings. There's definitely some attention that needs to be made in regards to some of the potential cost escalation that might hit with the supplies and the commodities and some of the easements. So we'll get the revised budget. Pretty assured that we're staying within the budget so far of one point four billion. I don't think there's going to be a change for this year, but they will give us an update. Once we get that update, we'll forward that on to the council. Stateville Correctional Center. This morning, we had a last-minute invite on Friday from the community capital building department of the state and the DOC. So we had a team's meeting this morning to announce that they're going out for proposals for construction management and owner representative team. It'll be published tomorrow. They're going to be seeking these proposals. Probably going to take about three months for them to do the qualifications and maybe three more months after that before we see some type of plans. Well, not even plans, just see who they're going to choose for the construction and owner's representation. I think it's very, was a very positive meeting, was very short, right to the point. They're going to keep us informed, and as soon as we get anything from their website, I'll send the links over so you can get updates in regards to the correctional. They did give us an update on the population, and I think it was eleven hundred eighty-seven are currently in Logan. And I don't remember the number that was in Stateville. I think it was right around twelve hundred and something for, in the, in the R and C. So the fire protection district training facility proposal, it is on hold a little bit because they're waiting for the traffic study report. We didn't want to do any more further review until we have that report in hand. I think it's very important to have Division Street looked at in regards, especially the turning radiuses for those fire trucks coming and going out of there. Even though it's not in emergency operations, they have indicated that if they are training and they are called, they will respond out of that location if they're doing training. So we hopefully have the traffic study from their traffic engineers and then get their concept plans. I think the earliest we're going to see something, where you're going to see the concept is probably the January meeting for planning commission, might even be February. We have a meeting tomorrow with the township fire protection district. We're going to be doing a post-critical incident debriefing on the fire that was at BL Duke Scrap Metal Yard. We're first going to see what, what the operations was, how much water, manpower, equipment, and if anything was damaged. And then we're, we're going to be working with the attorneys from, working with Mike Stiff, our attorney, and then the township attorney to give a notice to BL Duke, reference to possible damage, ask it for reimbursement for some of the costs to fight that fire. So once we get the post-critical incident debrief report, after a draft is done, we'll be able to get copies out to everybody in regards to that, that incident. The job announcements, as you all know, we, we thought we had a public works director conditional offer of employment. It's not pending anymore. He's withdrawn and declined, so we'll be having further discussion in regards to the public works director. Mike Ulis's last day was Friday. He does have about ten hours left. We're trying to save those for the new director so he can at least have some time with him. So at this point in time, I'll have to be working with Dave Straw, HR, and maybe at the next work session, talk about the options in regards to what we're going to do. The earliest that Mike Ulis could come back to work for us under the I R F rules under his retirement is mid-February. He is open to have that discussion, but he would not commit that he would definitely come back if we don't have a director by then. But he said he'd be open to, don't forget him, call him, and he would like to discuss it further. In the interim, what I've done when Mike was on vacation or he was out of town, I would work with the crew leaders. They all have my number and my cell number, and if anything was going on, they would contact me for any direction. I periodically would stop by the public works when Mike would be on vacation or not in the area and meet with them and meet with secretary, meet with Ada. So I believe we have great crews. They'll be able to operate without an official director while we're working out what's the next step the city council's going to want to do to re-advertise for the position or not. Community development director, that's on the agenda tonight. Ask her for the appointment. He's all excited, and hopefully he gets approved tonight. It'll start on sixth of January. He wanted to give his employer notice of at least minimum four weeks. And with him being out of state, he knew he'd probably need a couple of weeks for the relocate to the area. Finance director recruitment, he started. Glenn has been working with our interim. Finance director, her last day is this Thursday. Everything's going well, and he is fitting right in so far. He had some Cassell training today on the finance accounting, and I know he's been working with our treasurer and making sure, we try to get a smooth transition here. Building inspector announcement, the one part-time person that we had that we were given a conditional offer, she has turned that down now for other reasons. She's not looking for employment anymore. They're going to have something to do with basically childcare is what we heard. So we'll be out there. We are, we're supposed to have an interview with a candidate, I think tomorrow, I think it's Wednesday. We're still getting a few applications. The water meter replacement project, still knocking on doors. We're still trying to get, we need seven more, oh no, this is the replacement. Replacement project, we're knocking on doors, getting the non-compliance property owners appointments for us to go in and change out the, change out the meters. We're getting anywhere from three to five a week that we're able to get changed out. So we're definitely probably down to about seventy more homes that we have to do. Places for any tax, the hearing is tomorrow, yeah, the twentieth, Wednesday. The hearing is Wednesday. We have five businesses that were issued citations. We do know one business has paid at least three or four of their months in arrears, and they're attempting to pay the rest before they, before the hearing date. The other four businesses, we checked again today, they haven't made any payments on their delinquents. So we'll see what happens at the hearing date. Sanitary syrup plant, everything is moving forward. The one thing that we are running into some challenges with is the contractor is looking to get a more timely payment. The state has been, state's been good up till recently. We've had our, the loan payments coming back to us. Sometimes it's taken almost thirty-five to forty days. By the time they turn in the slip, so it's like tonight, it's on the agenda tonight for approval, it could be seven, eight weeks before he gets paid. He says he would like to hopefully get a thirty-day turnaround. We told him, oh, we'll try to see if we could, we could work on that and see if we could help out, get quicker payments for him. Crime lab, no update. And then the old city hall property, we, we did have a meeting with Quick Trip representatives. These were actually people that worked for Quick Trip. They weren't the consultants. The concept was looked at. There was three or four things that staff was able to give some suggestions in regards, especially for access and for them to be able to orientate the building so it's more toward Theater Street. And they, they were open to that. So we'll see another concept probably in about another three or four weeks. Once we, once they, they say they want to do the application, that's the next step for them under the contract. They'll close on the property once they get their entitlement done. So it is a P U D, so the concept plan will have to come through city council, and then we'll have a hearing at planning commission, and they're trying to target toward March or April to try to have their entitlement done and close on the property. And the next step would be demolition. That's all I have.
Any questions of the city administration?
I have about three questions, Tony.
Yeah.
With the Stateville project, did we satisfy the tech, I mean, the water bill thing yet?
No, we actually, legal and staff had another meeting to go over the final records because the Department of Corrections actually got served a subpoena. It's called subpoena, was it? What's it called?
My batteries are falling out.
Okay.
So the Court of Claims judge issued an order saying that the State Department of Corrections had not filed a response to our complaint. We have in our file a signed document that appears to be a response, but it is not file stamped in the Court of Claims. So the judge issued, the judge issued an order that the Department of Corrections needs to file their response by a date certain in November, and if they don't file it, they need to appear in court in Chicago, and I don't have the date in front of me. The, the order specifically says that we do not need to appear since it's the state that has not filed what it has supposed to, it was supposed to file. So that is the status of the case from the Court of Claims standpoint. What Tony and staff and I met was to determine some way that someone's going to reach out to try to find out when we can get our money, if we can agree on the lesser amount with an agreement to continue to fight another day on the remainder amount if we think we can prove it. I understand that there might be issues with our ability to document that, but that's going to be for a different day. So without getting into any further legal defense strategy on the settlement that should take place in executive session, that's kind of the update that I can provide.
No, I appreciate that. That's good enough. Also, I was gonna- Also, I was going to ask that with District Five and Stateville doing construction projects, could we make a request that they look into putting up the 25-foot burns like Lockport Fire Department is proposing? I did get some feedback from a company that specializes in building outside young ranges, and they said a 25-foot burns does suppress the sound enough that animals and people with real sensitive hearing would probably be the only ones affected, so.
Yes, we could, well, we'll definitely write a letter and possibly communicate with them and tell them that 25-foot burn, if you could give me an example where one of them built, I know that always helps.
Yeah, I think it's one in Tyler, Texas. That's where the correspondence came from.
Texas?
Tyler, Texas.
Okay.
The city that responded.
All right. No, good idea. We'll forward it on, keep you informed.
Okay, and lastly, with the public works director position, you know, since we're having difficulty bringing in people from the outside, do we have someone in the ranks that on the inside that we could look to promote? I mean, on our last hire, I heard the word good fit, and I can't think of a better fit than someone that's already here that knows our process.
Yes, I would like to be able to, because I'm going down there tomorrow, I've got a meeting at noon. I'm going to put that on the table. If somebody's interested in the position, please let me know.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I had a couple of questions for you, Tony.
Okay.
Regarding the first item, the city center facility outstanding projects.
Yes.
A and C regarding plumbing and stormwater drainage pipes. I looked on your past administrator reports and going back quite a while, and neither one of these was on there as an outstanding project.
Correct. I mean, we always, we always knew that the plumbing was a problem with the police department, and they've been rotting it out, and it seemed like that sort of worked. But this last time when they rotted it out, they definitely, the plumbing company even recommended that we do an assessment and analysis. There is definitely an elbow or some type of plumbing design that needs to get corrected, and so we're going to need to look at that because having them come out every three to four months, and this last time it plugged up, it was on a weekend, I think. Was it a riot, the last plug-up? But not 100% sure.
Is this the same issue we discussed quite a while ago?
Yes.
And I thought we were moving forward to rectify it then, what happened?
Yeah, we're hoping that the plumbing company was going to have an easier solution, but they're now recommending it's going to have to be a new design. So that means we're going to have to break into the walls and get into the design itself. Or televise it first so we know for sure what's the problem, and then we'll have to look at how do we redesign it so it will flow better.
Okay, how about item number C? How long has that been a issue?
We hired, we hired, you guys approved the maintenance contract for the HVAC company. So this is just a follow-up from that. We're keeping them on task.
This is the, I'm sorry, the stormwater drainage.
Oh, stormwater, stormwater drainage. That flow over by the windows has been going on every time we had a hard rain. We just thought it was possibly a design issue, and then when Mike Ulitz and then got into the storm pipes where water was backing up, that's why it couldn't even flow off the roof correctly into drain pipes. That's when they recommended to do an assessment, televise. When we televised the drains, we found at least two areas where they're broken. So that's what's causing the backup. So one of them is out front here. I think we might have to tear up a sidewalk to get at it. But before we go any further, we're going to make sure we get it all over televised and get a stormwater person in here to tell us what we've got to do to fix it.
So I just don't understand on a building this new to have cracked drain pipes like that two years after construction. And I have a real hard time having to go into city funds, taxpayer money to make repairs on a brand-new building essentially. Are we doing all that we can to pursue it with the original construction companies that did this? I mean, there's.
For, yes, for the install of the storm drains, we're planning on getting at least his opinion of what the problem is once we show him the televised tapes because it is unique in a couple of areas. They should not have broke. So either it's a, was poor pipes or the integrity of the pipes were maybe questionable. So when we dig them up, we might have a claim there that there's a defective pipe that they installed, or we possibly have a defect in the design that was put in. And was it inspected or non-inspected? We'll go through the records, see what we can do to find this out, so we get to an answer. Need to get, need to find out what the actual problem is, and then we'll, I'll bring back some more information.
Okay.
So you're saying if we do find that through the repair and everything else, that it's something that should not have happened, is it some, you're saying it's possibly actionable against the original installer?
We'll have to look at the contracts and the information that we find. We'll have to work with our city attorney and see if there's an avenue to possibly collect.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Moving on to our public works department, you have two agenda items in your packets. The first one is a request for approval of pay request number 21 from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to IEPA for approval and dispersment for a total amount of $317,164.40.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alder Person Overland for the approval of pay request number 21 from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated with direction to send to IEPA for approval and dispersment for a total amount of $317,164.40. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
And Tina Overland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And a second request from public works is approval of pay request number 22 from Viscery Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to IEPA for approval and dispersment for a total amount of $1,843,785.6. Motion.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of pay request number 22 from Viscery Construction Incorporated with direction to send to IEPA for approval and dispersment for a total amount $1,843,785.6. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wiedemann. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda, but I entertain any questions that council might have.
Any questions of city engineer?
Did this family get ahold of you today about the driveway apron?
Yep, it's already done, taken care of.
Thank you so kindly.
All right, thanks, Ron. Community development, we have nothing on the agenda. Moving on to our police department, Deputy Chief Dapsik is here this evening. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have one item for, on the agenda tonight. We're looking to approve a master service agrees, agreement for the software company Just Foya. As was previously discussed at the October 14th work session, we had discussed how we believe that the city is in need of an online portal for our FOIA requests. Again, the police department's currently at 280 FOIAs for the year. We did 290 last year. The city non-police FOIAs were at 203. So again, we talked about the importance of that. We did take a look at three different companies at, in-depth, and again, I brought my record supervisor who's here tonight in the back. I again want to iterate to her and the council, she did a phenomenal job in addition to all her other duties of talking with these companies and getting a lot of the details. And so again, after much discussion, the best fit that we believe was the Just Foya Software Company being the most financially responsible, and they came in with the best price and the most features. And so that is the company that we're looking to approve tonight. Again, we've discussed the contracts with our city attorney. We've met with the representative from there, and we're looking for approval for that tonight.
So moved, as presented. Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alder Person Overland for a resolution approving master services agreement number 24835 and an initial just FOIA order, addendum number one to master services agreement number 24835 by and between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and MCCI LLC for an online FOIA management software solution. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. It'll be 1269.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I don't have any other agenda items, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, any questions of police department? All right, thanks, Ryan. Okay, moving on to the mayor's report. First item on the agenda is appointment of Patrick Ainsworth as community economic development director. We went through the process with the interview process a couple of weeks back. I will say that this candidate has a lot of experience. Patrick is very energetic. He is very passionate about the position and the current municipality that he works for, and it appears that he will bring that same energy level and passion to the city of Crest Hill. He is well-educated in regards to his field, and I would highly recommend the appointment of Patrick Ainsworth as community economic development director.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alder Person Overland for the appointment of Patrick Ainsworth as community economic development director. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. You're putting them.
Next one, I was going to ask for that one second here, the resolution. Approve a resolution approving the appointment of Patrick Ainsworth to the position of community and economic development director for the city of Crest Hill effective January 6th, 6th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alder Woman Methen, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of a resolution approving the appointment of Patrick Ainsworth to the position of community and economic development director for the city of Crest Hill effective January 6th, 2025 at a starting salary of $152,500. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1270.
Just a couple of items from the mayor's report. The announcement tonight for our second annual city of Crest Hill Winterfest 2024 will be held on November 30th, 2024. It will begin at 3:00 PM here at city hall with a parade involving Santa Claus, and we'll go, be going throughout most of the streets throughout the city of Crest Hill for about an hour parade route. They will end up back here at city center here at around 4:00 PM. We will begin the winterfest. It is going to be a family-friendly winterfest for the, for our young citizens of the city of Crest Hill. There'll be pictures with Santa Claus, there'll be music, face painting, balloon art, kids' games, crafts, candy canes, the face painting, the giant snow globe, hot chocolate, coffee, cookies. All these events will be free to all of the residents, and there'll also be two food trucks. One will be Joey's Hot Dogs, the other one is a barbecue, barbecue pork and that sort of thing. So those food trucks will be here, and that will be a purchase if you would like to buy the food from them. Everything else will be free for the city of Crest Hill. So I would ask that, we do have several donations already from our vendors. We'll also have representation from the Grand Prairie Water Commission, the Lockport Township Park District, the Lockport Township Fire Department, and from our police department with Officer Outlaw with the, their information that she has to pass out. So again, we invite everybody to join us for that evening. Let's hope that it's not a very cold night, that it's a very nice night, that everything went very well last year. Last year, we thank all of our vendors for their donations that they made to be able to put this all together. So welcome to everybody on November 30th, starting at 3:00 to 7:00. The only other thing is with Thanksgiving coming up, I'd just like to wish all of our residents to have a blessed and happy Thanksgiving with your family and friends. Everybody have a safe holiday, and again, join us for the winterfest. If anybody would like to ask any questions of the mayor, I'll try to answer them. Hearing none, we'll move on to our city clerk's report. Christine Verche Hall.
Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight. The clerk's office wishes everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Any questions of city clerk? Thanks, Chris. Moving on to our city treasurer, Glenn Cockler. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I seek your approval on our list of bills issued through November 18th of 2024 in the amount of $2,897, or 80, I'm going to start that all over.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alder Woman Methen for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And thank you all for that. And lastly, just reporting our regular and overtime payroll from October 21st, 2024 through the 3rd of November, same year, in the amount of $254,059.54. That's all I have, and wishes for a happy Thanksgiving.
Any questions of city treasurer? All right, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Good night. New business, anybody? Unfinished business, anybody?
I wanted to bring up one thing. Mike, we discussed it a little bit before the meeting, that we had discussion regarding civil service compensation, and you felt we should bring it to the next work session for a little more discussion?
Yes, there's a question of whether we need to make the plan commission consistent with what has been suggested for the civil service. So I think it bears another work session discussion rather than coming before the council for approval at a meeting.
Okay, we can have that on next Monday nights, work session, Tony? Okay, committee liaison reports, anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents?
I had a committee report, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the events committee, I'd like to announce the 2024 Annual Christmas Light Decorating Contest has begun. Starting this Wednesday, forums will be available on the city, on the city website and at the clerk's office. The last day to submit your entry is December 9th at 4:00 PM, and judging will take place between December 11th and December 14th. So make sure your lights are on during those times. Winners will be announced at the December 16th. Winners will be announced at the December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting. If anyone has any questions, please contact me. My phone number is seven seven nine, two two seven, one six zero five and my email address is msapiti@cityofcresthill.com. Thank you.
Okay, city council comments? We'll begin with Alderman Dyke this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving kind of starts the season of giving thanks and not just for that one day, but for the whole season, all the way through Christmas and all year long. We have so many blessings to be thankful for. Instead of looking at things we don't have, we should be thankful for all we have. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Alderman Methven?
Just a moment for safety. I want to make certain that if you are going to be frying your turkey, that it's fully defrosted and that you are frying it away from your home under, without being under trees. And have a happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Jefferson?
Just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe holiday season. Thank you.
Alder Person Overland?
Well, I'd like to wish everybody out there a very happy Thanksgiving and please, as I've said in many years past, take time to reflect on people around you that may not have a lot to be thankful for and if you can do something to brighten their day or their season or even take them a homemade treat, you'd be surprised at what the effect of something as small as baking cookies for a housebound neighbor or checking in on them with a meal. You'd be surprised what they can do. So open your eyes and see who could use a lift and, and pass it on. And happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Sapiti?
I too would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Albert?
I'll just kind of piggyback off of Alder Woman Methven's safety tip. As you're out decorating your house too, definitely be safe with those Christmas lights that you're gonna enter into the decorating contest and we hope to see everybody at the winterfest next Saturday. Thanks, Mayor.
Alderman Kubal?
Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Okay, public comment. Anybody like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
Not from my standpoint.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor, second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an adjournment. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Jennifer Methen.
Present. Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, meeting is adjourned at seven forty-nine P M. Thank you and good evening.